...time on your schedule with Eddie coming on, so really appreciate that. If we could, I'd like to start off with a pledge and a prayer. Do you want to make a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to make a statement? Dear heaven and father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here today. God, we ask for you to guide our thoughts and our actions and our discussion here today. Help us be ever mindful of the sacrifice that you provided for us. Help us all to be servant leaders. We ask these things in your name. We do have a warm welcome to commissioners. Appreciate everyone coming out here today. It's a beautiful facility. I think it's the first time that this body of men have been here. You've been here before.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioners, okay. At least four years ago.
Well, the big thing is definitely that.
Okay.
But, you know, back about ten years ago, we were looking at the fact that the Air Force was making an impact for Cleveland County, not just the Shelby itself. So that's when we decided to partner. As Eddie was coming in, we remembered where it used to be with Oars for here. It was an old brick building, bathrooms on one end, and then a little desk on this end. And his storage facility was boxes, cartons stacked itself. And we had the governor kind of making an announcement. We couldn't get about 20,000 people in here. And then this was the city of Shelby to start a plan and to rework the airport. They're buying up properties all around the airport, you know, to make it a little more viable for people who don't like, who always just trying to get out. They fenced it. The taxiways are being reinforced for larger airports. This is probably, and from experience, one of the nicest runways anywhere. I mean, large shop, you know.
It's a beautiful place to be.
It is. And I think Dan did a great job designing it. And like I said, we visited different places to try to get some input. But the Airport Advisory Board and the city of Shelby, I don't think you can ask for a better place. I would tell Eddie too, pilots can come in, they're coming on their side, and they got a code they can get in at night, and they got a bed, they got showers, they got all electronics they need to hit weather.
Fueling station. Your fueling station.
Now, one thing that I've got a little against that part is, and I can't understand it, but there's more fires than me to look at. Behind the world, they put the helicopter landing site right next to the fueling station. I mean, I know you can get the line to the helicopter and refuel them, but if something were to happen, the helicopter will land in right there at the refueling station. Anyway, that's not how they're approached along, but they did a great job.
Yeah. Well, we definitely appreciate the awareness that we'll be able to have a meeting out here. So it's good to be out here and see something that's so involved with the county and the government. What today's meeting is basically is, over the last several months, commissioners have brought up different topics to staff, and they've been keeping a running list, and this is an opportunity for us to talk about some of those topics, try to catch up on our goals, do an update of the commissioner goals. Also talk about the goals for the county staff as well. But they, County Manager and Kerry both, they led the staff in looking at goals and seeing how they correlate, and it's neat to look at their goals and see how they correlate to the commissioners' goals as well. So this is truly a meeting for us just to have a good roundtable discussion. And what we've got basically is, if you brought something up, or if you're one of the people that brought something up, we've kind of got your names tied up, and you all can lead the discussion on that section. We'll just jump into it and start off. The first topic that we're looking at is future vision for economic development. And Susan, we've got your name beside that if you want to.
We just have this discussion on that.
First, I want to commend Kristen Nebruch. Thank you very much for what you've done, Nebruch, and reading this and taking a good charge in the last few years on economic development. I guess one of the topics, one of the reasons that I was interested in this topic is that we've had some challenges going from tier one to tier two. And, you know, of course, we've had a few challenges recently with a couple of companies we thought may come to town and bring their business here. But the one thing that, I guess, that we've been very successful, we jumped right in the forerunner for all the other counties in North Carolina. And I think we led a great example for all of them. And I feel like that they're learning by our example. I mean, I know that it's not the only reason that some of them are getting some of the businesses that we built on as well, but they're not built on, but we try to get to come to campus. But, you know, I think it'd be a good idea for us to get some ideas, start thinking of what we can do different. We've been different, and what can we do different now than what we were in the past? As leaders, it seems that people, when they come in, they start saying, well, they've done a good job. How did you do it? And what did you do? And then they go back and take what they want, the wheels that we created, and start taking them back to their own hometown and start doing. So I guess I'd like everybody to start thinking, you know, what can we do different to be the leader again? And start, you know, is there collaboration that we need to do? Is there anything that you guys need from the county commissioners? You know, is there a new industry we need to start targeting? A new way that we present our package, I know that, you know, as far as what we can offer? So I'm just kind of throwing those things out to everyone to see if anybody has any thoughts on what we can start doing different, especially with the, being a tier two has made a big difference, and it's something we have to live with and deal with.
You get punished for being a testor.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's right.
I could use you to come and I got it. I talked to Chris Holbrook and David Christian. And I guess my understanding, our tactics and our means that we've approached it is still good, okay? That we still have some good tools in our toolbox, even though we lost a few. That our major setback is then with the state. And my rec, what I'm saying, and I'm not taken, trying to speak for you, but understand that the last couple of jobs we lost. Our package at the county was up front. Nobody could beat us on it. But when it come down to the state, then we lost it. You want to elaborate on that?
You know, I think Kristen can be probably more specific. But we, I think county put together a heck of a package on at least the two that I'm most familiar with. And we even had the client that sit across the table want to tell us in pretty straight language, the county package, we shouldn't do any more than what we were doing. It was certainly adequate. And it was pretty creative in some instances, but it was nothing that was going to break the bank, so to speak, but it was a good aggressive package. But we got wiped out by the state. South Carolina and what they brought to the table through the governor and her participation in the process of Shelby personally just kicked us under the bus. Now, what they did, Kristen may know precisely what they did better than I do, but the terms that they used was, the state packages aren't even comparable. So it's pretty cut and dried right now unless Commerce, or specifically the state, gets Commerce organized or gets private public partnership organized. It's hard for a county to compete against the state, and that's what we were doing, or that's what we've done almost in the last two. Cleveland County can't compete against the state of South Carolina. And it's been pretty much a disaster according to what we were told last week. There are some proposals in the new budget, which is being discussed and negotiated, that will help put, or tools in the box, so to speak, for the state. But until that budget's passed, we've still got, I don't know if it's one arm, it's almost two arms tied behind us. And another real crucial factor, we just learned in the last month or so, some of the brokers who were working with the state that are extremely competent, years of experience, that we had formed relationships with have been let go. So that sort of breaks the line of negotiation and discussing issues when projects are brought into the state and you don't have a direct line of communication going with a broker that's, that you're familiar with and you know does a really good job. Kristen probably needs to elaborate on more specifically.
I'll be glad to add some flavor. I think, first of all, this board should be committed on, I mean, you guys have absolutely raised the bar and set the standard in the state of North Carolina, just from a economic development private management standpoint. And just from, by the way, that the board thinks outside of the box. We act very aggressively from project inception throughout the duration of the project. We have been told, as Eddie mentioned, time and time again from consultants that are representing these economic development projects, that our package is aggressive, it's concise, it's well put together. We respond effectively, immediately, comprehensively with the RFPs that we respond to when we're initially responding on a project. We continue to receive good feedback relative to those factors. We, time and time again, become the finalists in the state of North Carolina for very large economic development projects. We have worked on some very, very, some of the nation's largest projects over the last eight years. And unfortunately, we've seen the overall pot within the state of North Carolina, the financial incentives pot shrink. And there are certain caps that we see that are on these very important financial incentives. For instance, the J-Dig, there's a legislative cap there. So we don't have the flexibility when we get to that final spot, when we're negotiating against other southeastern states to really obtain the increase that we need from the state due to that legislative cap. So there's some inflexibility there. I know the state is currently examining some possibilities. I believe there's some legislative, there's some legislation in place for a potential deal closing fund that they're looking at creating that would give us, hopefully, some more leverage there. States like Texas have had a closing fund like this for years. And then, as Eddie mentioned, what's a very important factor to consider is related to the state's economic development efforts and how they actually interact and interface with those clients when they're looking at our state. And South Carolina is an excellent example. Governor Haley, I know, is highly engaged in those efforts from the very first breakfast meeting throughout the project. That's very meaningful interaction when it comes to working in economic development project. It is very much a contributing factor, I think, to a client or a company making that emotional connection to a state or to a community. And you guys have that down pat. We have that interaction. We have that support locally. But we're hoping to see the state step up their efforts and become more engaged from the very first time that client steps foot into the state. But, you know, moving from tier one to a tier community, it's given us higher thresholds that we must meet relative to the employees that are tied to the financial incentives. So, but in reality, once we get to that point where we're the finalists in the state of North Carolina, we're negotiating with other states, that technically those tier status, the tier status should come off at that point, where we have the flexibility and the room for negotiating those financial incentives. The tier structure was created so communities within North Carolina could have more of an even playing field when they were all actively working on projects, so.
When you get to the final two or three, the vulnerability of the tier status is not as important as it is when you're going through the preliminary.
That's right.
But as Kristen mentioned, something is very much of a factor. A good many of the governors in the states that we compete with have closing funds that they have access to, that the governor can become a viable part in closing a deal because they have opportunities on their desk that they can throw into the equation that the North Carolina governor has not had in the past. And if this budget goes through us, the governor should have some of those opportunities. And we have to be very careful because, you know, the last thing we need to do during all this process, even though we don't want to create enemies between Cleveland County and Raleigh. I mean, we got to maintain a harmonious working relationship. It puts us further behind the eight ball. So we don't want to burn bridges in communicating with Raleigh. We just have to try to be honest and straight and say to them, in a kosher manner as possible, what we feel like is the problem without turning opposite direction from Cleveland County. It's a delicate issue.
I think one of the things I'd like to say about this, I mean, we do have, I think we have an excellent relationship with our local delegation in Raleigh, and they're 100% supportive of our effort here. And they want to know from, I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but I know they have, they are looking at ways of trying to help fix the problem with Raleigh and at the state level. So I think we've got great relationships there. I know they're open to innovative approaches toward economic development, and I know we are as well. One of the positives I often have is, is I think we've got the right people in place, we've got the right opportunities, we've got the right resources here. When Raleigh is fixed, we ought to be in really good shape to compete. We can't do much about what South Carolina's doing right now, but when North Carolina's fixed, we ought to be in really good shape to compete.
It's, you said where we sit, it's just a total flip of the coin, with the coin landing on the opposite side of the way Commerce operates now versus the way it's operated up till the last, what, year and a half, two years. They were so much more engaged. You had a face of a Commerce secretary who was involved personally in projects and who communicated with the county personally, with project directors and things. You don't have that now. And I don't know whether it's taken them longer to try to change structure within Commerce, but as Jason said it well, until they get it changed and get it fixed, we're going to continue to have something left, I'm afraid.
Talking about the vision for economic development, and this conversation has gone on for a long time. I'm probably the only sitting member of this board who members, I mean, not remember, but who've been involved with when we had an economic development director, they had an assistant, and we had an economic development advisory board. And out of that, we had been looking at ways to involve the general public because we think they had a buy-in to growing industry here. And also, it was our opinion at that time, I believe it was Mark Carter, it was one of the big ones that was helping, and we put together the group 2020. And there was contentious years after 2020. But the thing about it is, is that we had to recognize that we did not have enough funds just to go out and do economic development on our own, that we need to have some partners, and that was like a hospital and a bank. At the beginning, there were a number of individuals who bought into it, especially like your realtors and all, who were hoping to get firsthand information about a company coming or something. I still believe that 2020 is one of the best organizations that we have, you as our representative on 2020, and the city of King Mountain, the city of Shelby, Forest Springs, Forest Springs, that it's time to, we can't change Raleigh, that's work in progress, but we really need to reorganize 2020. It's my opinion is that we don't need to be under the umbrella of the Chamber. We're giving them funds to kind of run the 2020 organization when we should be having 2020, getting the local people who still help us buy in the economic development, Christian being the president of that organization made it, and then answering directly to the county manager. While we got that extra little bubble in there, I do know that we set it up that way because we had to have 501(c)(3) set in time to get the local monies. But we can do that ourselves without that third partner in there. It's my opinion that with the economic development team we have now, 2020 can do the wrong thing. We just don't need a third party involved in it. I think the Chamber is designed to do its one thing, and 2020 was designed to do economic development. So I know that probably don't fit well with a lot of people, but it's time that we look at it. I don't want to go back to this part where we just had an economic development director answering directly to the county manager because what we've done, or what we would to do is lose all of the public money that had been put into economic development. That's considerable amount of money. I hate to lose any of those partners, so I think the 2020 is still the way to go. It just needs to be under a different leadership.
I would, and I appreciate your comments. I know there's been some discussion about 2020, the direction, how it's set up. We're not, we're not planning on taking any action on anything today at this minute. It's a workshop session, so really for discussion. But what we could maybe do is ask staff to, if we could look at the economic development. I know there have been some, the Chamber has been working on their relationship with 2020 now, and maybe we can get a report back from them and.
We have to solve them out and involve them in the cause of 501(c)(3). But all the economic development effort is made by people who are answering to the Chamber president, and to me, they should be answering to county manager. I mean, I know the Chamber's job is to go out and promote the county, and it doesn't mean they can't still be at the table when the economic interests come, but on the everyday thing, these things don't need to be reported to the president of the Chamber about something that they already done all the work on. It needs to be with our representative, it needs to be with our people that we basically are paying to do economic development.
I think, I certainly don't disagree with you. I think that Chamber's working now through Jeff, I think they've found some loopholes in the bylaws and so forth, which did not address what you're talking about. And I think Jeff and Chamber people are working, they're probably going to come back with some suggestions or recommendations on the bylaws that would, I think, bring what you're talking about to the forefront, because that has been a problem, but no question.
I honestly just do not believe that we need to have the Chamber president in negotiations with economic development. Not saying they can't get part of it, they shouldn't be the ones that our people go and have to get their ball or paper from. It should be people who are really involved in it. And Eddie, I know, I was there when we had the EDC director, I was there, and when I talked to the deal, and it really got contentious when we started developing 2020. The bylaws were revamped several different times, there were some factions in there, but the whole part of 2020 is bringing public dollars to economic development, not just using county funds.
I would suggest that, you know, maybe Jeff can give us an update on some of the discussions they've had.
That's just my opinion.
I want to elaborate one other thing on what, too. I think, sort of correlated to what Kristen's saying, it's hard, one of the things, you can always look for other ways of doing business and evaluating things. I think that's a constant, and you should always be looking for ways to improve. And this is all the situation we're all in, most mandates right now. And I think one of the things that we're looking at doing, like Kristen and David's seen, that probably is more advantageous for us right now to pursue the smaller projects, where we can be more competitive, where the state is not that major a player. Secondly, I think, jump out of the box just a little bit more, there are more than one way to have economic development. And just the recruiting of manufacturers or things of that nature is the way that most people think of as being economic development. And it sure is, but there's other ways. And I think you see something, Greenwood see duh as duh, and you see that, the gun range is going to be another perfect example of the regionalism that that thing will have with people coming in, spending nights, generating, spending dollars, increasing retail revenues, the thing that softball tournament did this past weekend. I'm just using those as a couple examples. So I'm saying maybe while we are sort of in the twilight zone, working things out, and the state getting part of Commerce fixed the way they want it fixed, we need to really concentrate on these other, these other things too, the other areas that do generate revenue for the county, it's just a different way than it's general.
Eddie, just a minute. Just a little bit, I mean, it's not the right place, but it's still economic development. Johnny and I attended a veteran meeting, and when we get down to it, I want to share with you something about economic development.
Yeah. Just a comment upon what you said. I was also on the commission, Dr. South, and went through this 2020 partnership process, and developed, and we knew over the years it's got to change. But, you know, my question is, you show we're going to direct staff. Staff should be Eddie and Jeff. We need to make that clear, so that it doesn't what staff want to bring us suggesting back. But I've looked at this thing over the last month or so, and I'm not so sure, to me now, that I want 2020 directly under county because if you look at it, there are certain things and certain benefits you get if they're not directly with us. When they fall under county, the county government, that changed the whole perspective of a certain group, how to report, what information is public, what information is not, there's a whole new realm. But I think.
But I think it should be something out there that if we wanted to still pardon the Chamber, there should be a dual departments type deal. Okay, you've got this twenty twenty department, they go this route, Chamber goes this route. Our people, then they coordinate back and report back some, some sort of system that we've got now, but like I said, I'm having, I guess I'm having hindsight, you know, looking back, is that position really what we need to do?
Well, I think what Jeff and I have been preaching to so far, and we don't have a conclusion on, is just, it sort of addresses what you and Ronnie Holt are talking about. We still want to utilize twenty twenty, but how do you, how do you structure everything to where economic, you're able to utilize twenty twenty in the Chamber, but county manager and economic development have a priority position in the negotiations and the discussions of economic development? I think that's sort of what you're, and that's sort of a sticky thing right now, that, I mean, I know Jeff's had two or three meetings, and we're trying to massage that thing and fix it the way, we can come back with something in black and white, so you can let that think about it.
Would it mean, I mean, would this meet your expectations if, if we were to ask staff, Eddie on the economic development, and Jeff, as well as Chamber, to give us a basic summary of where they're at now? What they, what they think that would fix, that would meet both your, your, your goals and your objectives, and make sure yours is live?
Well, I think, like I said, I think everybody's been, what I'm saying there, that, you know, there's certain benefits I have in there, and we need to make sure that those benefits don't go away.
Our, our relationship with the Chamber is extremely important. I think everybody at table says.
Well, not only that, not only that, but there are certain laws, rules, and regulations that we want to, you know, we can get the best of both worlds, and let's go active, but let's don't lose what we got.
Right. Well, we lost a good bit.
Yes, I think what you're saying, what I think what you're saying is Eddie can get with Jeff, and they can come up with something, and he can bring us, you can bring us a report back. We just look to be the rest of them.
We're not too far away from that.
We've been talking about this on and off, you know, for years, especially when some problems come up about who answers to who. And, you know, I just, I'm sorry, it just don't seem, and I know why we did it, and that's the five oh one three C.
And it may be a time that the Chamber needs to look at what they're doing, and if we're going to stay with them, have two different people, which we can have the economic development role that reports to whoever, the Chamber reports to them, that our person reports back to us, basically, something, some of that.
Yeah, the part of the timeline is, I would like to see something done about this, and a definitive answer of what we're going to do before they have a new, they sit a new Chamber president.
I think that's, I think that's the direction that would be real helpful, would be a timeline, because we're, we're closing it on the end of July, and I know the Chamber is actively recruiting a new president. I don't know how much longer that's going to take, but if I could get board direction, and Commissioner Holbrook has been very involved, and he and I have, as you typically expect, he and I have coordinated on this together, and will continue to, so I don't need the board to tell me to do that. But it would be helpful to give me a timeline to say, and in Ronnie's case, he's suggesting, let's go ahead and ask them, so let's go ahead, please, and make this a priority of cleaning up the bylaws and the reporting relationships. And I'd like to have that done on the eve of you hiring a president. That means it needs, that means it needs to take priority in the next thirty to sixty days.
I think, I think that would be good, to do it five or two hiring a new.
Before they give a new president his direction of what he's going to do, he needs to know whether it's going to be, who is going to be part of that or.
Right, yeah, right. And I could, and if that's the board direction, I can go back and I'll continue to coordinate with Commissioner Holbrook as the ED lays on. I'll talk to the interim president and keep Commissioner Holbrook in the loop, and talk with the current Chamber chair, and we can talk through that. And I'll, I'll work to meet that expectation and get that information back to the board as quickly as possible.
Come on, I was thinking closing from my end, because I want to make this really I know everybody sitting around this table understands the importance of getting along, not only with one another here, but the importance of getting along with people in Raleigh. And for that reason, I probably say too much occasionally. Kristen does a better job than I do of misogynizing everything, you know, but we, I mean, we could literally say some things that shouldn't be said concerning economic development packages. Well, who loses in that? We, because we burned some bridges in Raleigh, and it's not necessary for us to do that. You know, we make a little side remark, well, that we've already made in there, and that's certainly enough said, and that within itself gets a little controversial at times in Raleigh. So, and I, and I, in all honesty, I feel for the governor, because he's, he's trying his best to do something, and he's got part, a party over here wanting to do something, he's got another party in the middle of the road wanting to do something, he's got another party out here, so there's about three different elements that he's trying to work with and bring together on, on an approach to, to economic development. And I always said, when he was elected, I said, this is going to be a boon for economic development because of the job he'd done in Charlotte. And then all of a sudden, you know, these other equations enter in. I think our, our task is, one, try to maintain the relationship we have now. Secondly, maintain the relationship, we certainly have a very elected official that represents us that are in a position to even go up a little higher, a little bit higher. And third is to try to do what we can do to help them, Lamari, and sometimes we're not the best at that, because we get going the way we want to go as a county, but we need to try to help.
And you hear me on this, I might, I may be wrong, but I think that the one thing that has undermined in the last little bit, our biggest economic efforts, is when, when whoever did it didn't put us into a tier two.
That, and Kristen spoke to this, too, that, that hurt us some, Rob, but when you get to, like, you tell me if I'm wrong, but when you get to one like the tire company, and you get to those real major projects, it's not as big a factor as it is on a lot of the smaller projects. It is a factor on a lot, on smaller project, because you lose, you know, you J dig incentives and things like that. You, you lose money there that you can put to the table because of jobs, the capital income, the unemployment rate in your county, all those things which are going good for us, but they elevate you to a tier two. And the bad thing about it, in one sense of word, we just barely made it into tier two. I mean, just barely crept into tier two, so we're having to pay the price of all the other people that are in tier two. We barely are there. And it hurts on J dig incentives and other things that Kristen probably.
Yeah, that's a question there. Example, to follow from Ronnie's question, okay, but in some way that we, that y'all can develop, let's, okay, here's tier two versus tier one. This is what we feel like we've lost leverage, and this is maybe something we need to look at to gain leverage back on the county level. Is that a reasonable answer? Do you understand what I'm asking? Would you respond to that?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, maybe, could you, could you pose that question?
Okay, I guess what I'm asking, we had a toolbox that working out on it. Okay, one of the tools was we were tier one, we lost that. How did that really hurt us? What did it do to us? And if that was a major factor, what would be the recommendation that we could do, maybe countywide, to put something back in that toolbox that would equal it out?
Well, I think to answer, maybe semi-answer that question.
You don't have to answer it now, would it be, asking too much to ask where it lives in a later time?
It'd be very difficult for me to quantify or show a direct correlation between losing a project as a result of being a, moving from a tier one to a tier county. Now, I can tell you right off the bat, if you look at the North Carolina grants, and you look at the J dig grants, we can, I mean, I can put on paper immediately and show you what the requirement, how the requirements are very different.
I guess that's.
Which, to give you an idea, J dig for a tier one county, a hundred and twenty-five jobs must be created. That's kind of the job threshold that you're working for in order to be able to qualify for a J dig. For tier two, it's a hundred and fifty jobs, and it's a hundred and ten percent of the average wage that you must meet in order to get that. So just a little bit of a higher threshold in terms of actual job creation levels that the company must meet. But again, I think as we, as we mentioned before, once we become the finalist site in North Carolina, those, the tier status, that structure kind of falls apart, it is not applicable anymore. The state of North Carolina is going to negotiate on our behalf, or should negotiate on our behalf, no matter what tier status there is. And that's why I was saying the problem was, we have, there's a legislative cap on the J dig that doesn't give them the flexibility to, to bring forth a very, you know, enhanced aggressive package that allows us to be competitive with these other states, so.
I think what Commissioner Hutchison said, and I agree with totally, if it's not three things, if it's not but two things, if it's four things, that you can qualify by listing, I think what the board would like to see is, if it's just four minute points, lay them out there so we can look at them and think through them, and see if there's a way that we can figure up some other things, so.
The state's overall tax, taxation structure, which we, I don't want to try to even get into that today, but that's become an issue for us. That was very much conveyed to us by the tax consulting, consultants that represented represented one of the large tire companies we worked with. And again, legislative action would have had taken place there to initiate any sort of change relative to that overall taxing environment. And so, you know, that's certainly an issue. Their incentives don't always drive a project. And so right now, what we're hearing from consultants is the workforce, skilled workforce, as well as overall costs of doing business are the two main drivers, which obviously financial incentives can contribute to, you know, several years of that operational cost of doing business. But those are two, two things. We just, we just lost a project recently primarily due to, in, in, from the consultant, in terms of the feedback that they gave us, primarily due to what they deemed was a lack of skilled workers here. So they located closer to a metro where they felt like they would have a better, a larger labor shed that consisted of skilled workforce. So, you know, that's right off the top of my head, you know? We do everything we can, when we lose a project, we debrief, and we try to garner as much feedback from those consultants as we can.
That might be what we're looking for, when we do lose a project, it give us something of why we've lost it.
And sometimes we never know. We're never given an answer, but we definitely do our best to, but, but just, I hope that kind of, those are a couple of factors that I listed right off the top of my head.
I think, I think you don't have to elaborate a whole lot, but what we're asking for, if you can just give us three or four bullet points, and let us carry them around in our chest and see if we can figure out other ways, and Johnny would pass on some.
A couple of things that were mentioned today of, of starting to think out of the box again, and is looking at our workforce and what we can do to improve that and bring, bring skilled people, and also, you know, going after every big project that we can, but also being mindful of the other small projects that would continue to bring businesses to.
Which we are actively working, we always have, and I think that that goes back to the idea and the strategy that, that we wanted to create a balanced economy. You know, if we had another great recession, you know, we, we did not have that balance in two thousand and eight, and so it hit us pretty hard when we saw some of these plants closing in, and historically with the textile industry falling apart here, including county. So I think that's the best approach we can take, is to have that, that balanced approach. And creating more relationships with major lead generators, side consultants, brokers, seeing that we're, seeing the pipeline shrink with Department of Commerce, and you hit right on, on that nail, hit the nail on the head about, you know, ensuring that we're developing those relationships, so.
This is all, really good discussion, that's what this meeting's for, and economic development was our number one, and that's what we're going to leave off with. I would just remind the commissioners, and just my, my prime to rush, not going to cut off any conversation at all, because we've got about twelve different topics that we're going to hit, or subtopics we're going to hit in here, and if I'm figuring this right, if we spend as much time on the rest of us, we spend on this one, it's about eight and a half hours. So we probably need just.
We got the order of money.
I'm fine with that, as long as y'all want to stay, I'm, I'm good, so. But I just kind of want to keep some track, any other discussion on that first topic?
Economic development is big, and I'm going to say five or better years ago. We had looked at retail incentive because the state will give retail incentives. Now, I don't know if it is, if it is resistant to it somewhere, I don't sense it from the board, or whether it's just a complete lack of it or something. But from what I've been reading about all the new businesses that have been coming to downtown Shelby, King Mountain, I just don't see why we can't still go back and look at incentive for retail and not have, involve any paperwork such as that, because the way I figure it, it's so easy, is that if a guy wants to add a hundred thousand dollar piece to his business, and it goes just to building permit, we see that, and we have a little scale out there, how much incentive you'll get for taxes for a few years. And then if they're creating jobs, they have to report to the state of North Carolina their employment record, and all we have to do is demand that that employment record just to look at. And if they're not meeting one or the other, then they forget the incentives, too. But we even had, or we had some schedule set out of what people would get, and had them at a regular meeting, and then everything just disappears. So I guess what I'm asking, are there resistance on the part of this board doing that, or do you not, you know, interacted in pursuing? Do you have any? Oh, I don't know anything about that.
That's been in the last four, that's been in the last four years, because I was on the board when we discussed that. And if I could make a suggestion on that, if that's something just more, if there's consensus on this board, and we would like to look at that, we have a retail task force that we have developed for the county, and maybe ask them to look at how that would be implemented, if they think it would be, and let them look at it. Those are people that we've asked to serve on the committee for retail, to build retail, existing retail and, and future retail.
It's unfair that retail business cannot benefit from some type of incentive where an industry can, local and state, based on jobs.
Ronnie, I think, I think that's big enough, personally, I agree with you. I think it's big enough, we, we ought to have a, a representation, one from the board. Our board, that's one of their primary responsibilities, is to sort of look at, charge retail and drive it, and monitor it, and give us reports, and I can't do it, to be honest with you. I don't have time to do it. And I think if it's really done right, the person who's trying to drive retail probably don't have time to step over into where I, I probably work some, so I think we need to think about.
Well, again, I'll, I'll bring it back up, I mean, this, we've, we've set up a retail task force, and we've asked, actually, to myself and Commissioner Allen, are, are on that, and Commissioner Allen's going to be heading that, the retail task force up for us.
Like I say, we've been talking about this for over five years, and we're absolutely getting nowhere. So we either need to get some numbers, find out whether it will have an impact on our local businesses. Alpha one, I've seen people gas, don't you, get all the retail they have over there.
So I'm, I'm asking the Chair a loaded question.
So I might, I might ask the Chair a lower question.
Sure.
You can't be too cheap. Is she gonna be the person in, in charge of the retail element, or are you gonna be the person?
Let me take the.
The two of them figured that out.
Let me say, I'm, I'm, it's, the retail task force is, is coming up really soon, but I'll tell you right up front, uh, whenever we met the first meeting, the retail task force, which we just initiated a retail task force not too long ago, um, the first meeting that we had, um, we discussed, and, and to be honest with you, they asked me to serve until we could, until we could find someone to lead it. And Commissioner Allen and I have been in discussion, and I think she would do, with her background, with her organizational skills, I think she would do an excellent job of it. And, um, I, I, I've asked her, and, and I'm sure the retail task force would, would love for her to, uh, lead that task force up. I think she's very well qualified to do that. So, one chief there, and that would be, so, and we'll get down to that part in a minute.
Can't tell what she's smiling for.
I twisted it a little bit, so, um, but I really appreciate it on that. All right, let's, let's move on to the next topic, um, and, uh, Commissioner Holbrook, that was yours, plan for future industrial park, land purchase.
Well, you know, going back to history again, just right over here, we actually lost a large company one time because we didn't have acres, and it wasn't, uh, Dener certified, obviously. And in the last ten years or so, uh, not only has David Deere, uh, worked, put together, he took a look at parcel of the land, and then get permission from the commissioners to buy that land, until he had this new industrial park, which we have Clearwater Paper. And, um, then, at one time, the city of Shelby, we kept trying to tell them, but, you know, their tax basis is going under, and they need to do something, so David took it upon himself to look at their properties, and put the properties together, and started working with the county, and with the city of Shelby, and got footy. Most of you, most people who might remember, all the contention that took place about the industrial park when it was built, King Mountain. Oh, man, I tell you, it was, it was not a drag out fight. I wasn't on there then, it was just here on the show. And I believe that David set a presence for actually going out and looking at the big maps of the county, and seeing where industry may want to locate, and start kind of work to put these parcels together. Anybody knows that if, uh, you know, you're gonna build ABC Company here, that the price of that property's gonna be high, but he was looking at properties for the future. And then he was going in, getting them certified through Dener and all that, so that when Clearwater Paper came to town, there was no separate questions about it. So the only reason I asked this to be put on there is, is that this board would give the authority to jail, to look. Don't buy anything, just kind of start looking at where the next large tract of land, uh, would be necessary for economic development. And with the new simple bypass coming through, it could be just about anywhere, you know, uh, just like for Clearwater, you have to have rail, water, sewer, all those kinds of things. So just start getting our thoughts together on it, because we are running out of properties in these industrial parks that we have. I'm sure there's places, well, small places, but, uh, if we were wanting to affect a, a large company, who wanted hundreds of acres, I don't know if we have that much acreage in there. So, um, that's why I'm asking this to you. Throw the maps out on the table like David did, and the county manager just say, well, they said before, bypass, and this is where we have water, this is where we have sewer, where, where do, where do we think that the next industry might want to locate? And then maybe start looking and putting those parcels together until we have a large tract land that's ready to be, ready to go with some acres. And then, that might add to that.
I think over the years, we looked at it, it was so hard to get the issue value to even invest in it. But in the end result, the issue value had come out way ahead over the county on what they reach. I think it's time to look at, okay, we partner with King Mountain, we partner with Shelby. I think the new industrial park should be a partnership like we did in the last one. Instead, the county stepped out and said, okay, we're gonna buy the land, we're gonna develop it. Then the cities come in and they annex, and they take it over, they reap the benefits, and I think that we should look at the larger areas and say, okay, this is a good possibility it's located in this township, then approach that township, look, this is what we gotta go on, that's where David could help us, 'cause he's still working on a special project that Christian will turn it loose on. And then go a little bit.
No, no.
But anyway, David, David could be some assistance, and I think this is where we gotta start partnering to get these issue values, to put some money in to buy the property, because, like I say, you look at, uh, King Mountain industrial park, you look at Free Hill Commerce Center, who reached the most benefit from it? And you know, I do, David fought tooth and nail to get these issue values, just to partner, do something with it. So now, David's seeing what benefit it is, so they shouldn't have to stake in it, I, I think.
Well, all I'm, right now, I don't disagree with you. The only thing I'm asking is to give the county manager the, just put an advocate to work for him. Then try to start identifying parcels of land and a location that might be good for us in the future.
In the future.
And then if he finds a large acreage and everything that, that he could bring back to us and recommend us, and maybe work like you're talking about, purchase the property. And then get it certified and everything, so that if a company comes, you know, we can just say, hey, here it is, and it's ready. We've lost, um, I know that one large company, I can't think of one, we lost in South Carolina, called Poppy, or Poppy Rock, off Washington Switch.
That's, yeah, years ago, we didn't have.
Yeah, years ago, it was years ago, we didn't have anything yet, and so they went down and landed.
They had something ready.
In South Carolina, and that taught us a lesson at the time. And so we went back and David started adding to that Corrock box, so now we have Clearwater. But, um, if, I mean, and, and I know we need to keep the conversation short, but anyway, just give permission for, yeah, just start looking.
I think that's, that's the one, I think, I think another person to rank on the table with that would be Governor Carter, our land use plan. And just, just to revisit it, take a look at it, and I, I talked to him yesterday, that's all I'm making, and talking about the land use plan and asking how much has changed since it was actually done? And, and it's been, it's been, there's been some changes to it, so he said at some point, we probably want to, as, as a body, we probably want to take a look at that again. But I think going back to land use plan and doing exactly what you said, looking, that's being proactive, that's, that's making sure we've got room to grow on the way to, and what we can, so, I think that's very good. Any other discussion on that? Economic development, marketing campaign, um, Eddie, I'll run it over to you.
Well, I've already said some of this stuff, and I'll try to cut this pretty. I've just been trying to look at other ways that we could help develop our economic development approach, and what are other tools, as Johnny has referred to, what are, what are some other tools we can put in our box to help us in our development? And they're not just our development, our quality of life for the people, and improvement of the county as a whole, what are some things we could look at doing? And, um, I think at the appropriate time today, Jeff and I'll make reference to meeting we had concerning a corridor and some discussions that took, took place there, which is one of the things that I would look at as, as a tool that could be added into our chess for economic development. Another thing I think is, is the marketing. Uh, we haven't, we haven't really done much of that in the past. Is it time for us to do it now? I'm of the opinion that not a whole lot of other counties really do it, uh, try to put themselves out, out front. Greenwood, uh, I can remember Greenwood, what you saw there is not what Greenwood was like twenty years ago. I mean, I, I was in and out of Greenwood right often twenty years ago, and they've done a remarkable job, and I don't blame them for tooting their horn a little bit. Uh, but, uh, is it time for us to consider to look at, um, trying to market ourselves a little bit better? And trying, and I think it's especially critical now that we are trying to become a, a tribal tourism hub also, that we try to get what we're all out, out to other parts of the state, other parts of the region, from the gun range, to the World Series, to the softball tournament, to the swim meets, to the soccer meets, uh, all those type things. A lot of people don't really know what we're all about. And also, I think that it's a tool that we can use to better tell our community what we're all about. I, I dare say that a, a lot of our community, when, for example, we were at King's Mountain, and we said, raise your hand if you've been out with T5 data center park, and then maybe it was two or three hands, went up, you know, I, I think maybe we need to do some, look at, do some things to better inform our own folks, look what's taking place here. I'd give you another case in point, uh, from this little seven or eight minute clip that Carl White showed on the World Series on the weekend. I was talking to him yesterday, and he, of course, it tied in veterans and some other things too, so it wasn't just one accident. So he already had inquiries from New York, Indiana, Florida, and other TV stations wanting, wanting permission to use the clip, show the clip. So it, it's another way that we have something that we could develop in economic development, separate of what that was, that we, we could use to show clients when they come in and things. So I think it's just something that we haven't done a whole lot of in the past, is it time for us to start looking at it.
Can we show the video? Have we got the video? Eddie, would you be okay for us to show that video now?
This is the one that the American Legion.
Yeah. This was on TV on the week, this past weekend. Is that, is that correct? Past weekend or kind of this week?
This past weekend, and it was viewed three times in Charlotte. This thing viewed over six TV stations over two Carolinas.